Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the May 4th, 2022 meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. We're delighted to have each of you with us this evening, and this time we would ask that Ms. La Magna review the procedures for tonight's meeting.
Good evening. Agendas are available on the table in the lobby and at the front of the commission chambers. All the exhibits pertaining to items on the agenda are posted in the lobby. Please feel free to view the exhibits at any time during tonight's meeting. You are required to fill out a yellow form to speak before the city commission on topics on the agenda. Forms are available on the table in the lobby and in the front of the commission chambers. You must complete the sections that ask for your name, address, agenda item number, signature, and date. The form must be completed and placed in the designated box. Item number seven is your opportunity to address the city commission concerning any item on the consent agenda. Please indicate on the yellow speaker sheet the agenda item number of the item or items that you are addressing. Items or discussions not listed on the consent agenda will not be heard during this comment section. Agenda items under item number nine are public hearings and citizens may speak at the designated time. Resolutions under administrative items number 10 are open for public comments and you may fill out a yellow form to speak when that item is called. Speakers will be allowed to speak for three minutes. When you approach a lectern, please be clear into the microphone and give your full name and address. The three-minute clock on the monitor above the dais will start running when you begin to speak. Pay close attention to your time. You'll be told when your time has expired. Item number 12 is the public comment form, and this is the opportunity for the public to speak on any issue or topic that is not on the agenda. All citizens completing the green form will be allowed to speak for three minutes. When you approach a lectern, please give your full name and address. Disorderly conduct in the public meeting of the city commission. Article 2, Section 6238 of the City Code of Orances reads as follows. It shall be unlawful for any person to behave in a riotous or disorderly manner in any public meeting of the city commission, or any committee, agency, or board thereof, or to cause any unnecessary disturbances therein by force, shouting, or any other action that is calculated to disrupt such meeting. Order refused to obey any ruling of the presiding officer for such meeting relative to the orderly process thereof. Please be courteous and respectful of the views of others. Personal attacks on the city commission, city staff, or members of the public are not allowed. Please silence cell phones and other wireless devices during the meeting. All conversation must take place either at the lectern or on the dais so that everyone can hear the business being discussed tonight.
Ms. La Magna, may we have a roll call?
Commissioner Trager?
Here.
Commissioner Strickland?
Here.
Commissioner May?
Here.
Commissioner Cantu?
Here.
Commissioner Henry?
Present.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry?
Here. Oh, I forgot. This time we will have our invocation led by Commissioner Henry, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Trager.
Let us bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to gather again. We ask and pray that you bless each and every person here in the city of Daytona Beach. We ask and pray that you lead us, guide us, and help us to make the very best decisions for our citizens and others that we serve. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now move on to item number four, which is approval of the minutes of the February 16th, 2022 Orange Avenue Recreation Center City Commission Workshop, the February 23rd, 2022 Corbin Building City Commission Workshop, the March 16th, 2022 City Commission Shade Meeting, and the March 30th, 2022 City Commission Shade Meeting.
So move.
All right. We have a motion from Commissioner Trager and a second from Commissioner Reed. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero at this time. We have any changes to our agenda, our city manager will address them.
Yes, Honorable Mayor Commissioners, we would like to add, under the presentations, introductions of new staff members, also to move item 8D, First Amendment, to the construction contract for first step shelter site, PNS paving change order number one, time extension request to the administrative items. Add to item 8E the following donations from Commissioner Henry. 250 to National Hookup of Black Women Inc. school program for the local chapter, 350 to Senior Oasis Program for their end-of-the-year field trip, and $500 to Campbell School for their basketball program. Other administrative items, 10F, add a resolution appointing one member to the Orange Avenue Recreation Center Committee, and this is the appointment for Commissioner Reed.
Motion to approve the agenda with the said changes.
We have a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner May. Do we have any questions or comments? I hear none. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number six, which is presentations. Our first presentation is the city manager's office presentation from the Daytona Express Track and Field, and they will present an update on their program and thank the city commission for their support. And if you guys want to come on up too.
Good evening, Tony Wilson, 310 Guard, Daytona Beach, Florida, 32114. We're just here to give you guys an update. I remember seeing you guys before the season started. Just want to thank you guys for your contributions, your support for the kids. A couple of them here today, we might have some coming, but they just wanted to show you their medallions, they've been winning, working hard, day by day, brick by brick. So now we're getting ready for qualifying, district and regionals, yeah, June 4th, I think so. So we need you guys' support. Again, just congratulate them and keep pushing and put their best foot forward. And on behalf of the Daytona Express Track Club, we want to present the city with a nice plaque. Here it's going to come down. Come on, Coach Henry. Oh, they got some photos.
Well, there's a better place because of you all. Thank you, brother.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
They see themselves on the screen.
Oh, okay. Y'all on the screen.
No, look forward. One, two, three. One, two, three.
I'm just going to add something real quick. All right, so my name is Demond Noelley, and I'm also one of the coaches for Daytona Express, mainly the field side. Just want to, like Coach Tony Wilson stated, we will be going for districts and regionals. We have quite a few kids that will make it to nationals. Nationals this year will be North Carolina A&amp;T University, starting the last Saturday in July, the whole first week of August. Also, I just want to state, we will be remiss not to also thank Commissioner Cantu and Commissioner May for coming to our crime prevention workshop that we had. This year was entitled Ice Cream with a Cop. That went very, very, very well, way better than we expected it to be. We always try to tell the kids, they can be whatever they want to be, as long as they try their best. And when the two commissioners came, it actually brought home everything we were trying to explain to them, especially when Ms. Cantu said that she actually attended Campbell. That resonated with a lot of the kids, saying that, okay, I can be a commissioner or something else, also with Ms. May. So we want to thank you guys for that also. We greatly, greatly appreciate the investment you put into these kids because that's exactly what it is, an investment. And I want you guys to know that these kids have sat and worked, and they represent Daytona very, very, very well. So from Jacksonville to D-land to Titusville to Orlando, those are all the places we travel. And y'all see this bright orange shirt, they behave well, they compete well, and you can see they medal well. So again, thank you, because this is, we wouldn't be able to do it without you guys. So thank you very much.
Thank you all. Good luck. Thank you.
At this time, I would like to, Honorable Commissioners, Mayor and Commissioners, introduce two of our new senior-level staff members to the organization. First, I want to introduce Ken Thomas. If you'd just come up here to the mic. Commissioner Strickland already likes him because he says they have the same name, Kenneth. Ken Thomas is our redevelopment director, has numerous years of service, probably over 25 some years of service in redevelopment, housing, managing CRAs. And so we're looking forward to him providing some great insight and working with us to expand what we offer. He has an undergraduate degree from Bethune-Cookman and a graduate degree, and a master's degree from the University of Central Florida. So he brings some quality to our organization. And his background, if you were to, once you get the opportunity to talk with him, you'll see the type of work he's done in larger and smaller cities and redeveloping communities. So welcome aboard, Ken. If you'd like to say something, you can say something at this time.
Happy to be here.
Thank you. Our next senior-level leader is Jeff Brown, who is the Economic and Strategic Opportunities Director here in Daytona Beach. He has an undergrad degree from the University of Florida, so some people are already happy about that. And also a graduate degree from the University of South Florida, MPA. Jeff has over 30 some years working in government, starting out in planning, moving his way up to an assistant city manager. City manager, he's also served periodically as a city clerk and also a special projects director for redeveloping facilities. And so he will be helping us to deal with some of our economic development opportunities here and working very closely with Ken. So welcome, and if you would like to say something, you can.
I'm just going to echo Ken and say, happy to be here and look forward to working with all of y'all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to move on to item number seven. This is citizen comments. During this time, citizens have the opportunity to address the city commission on any item on the consent agenda. And just a reminder that item 8D was moved to the end of administrative items, so that item will be taken at that time. So our first speaker is Frederick Brown, speaking on 8A and 8B.
8A and B? Frederick Brown, 15-year-old Christian, from Daytona Beach. Yes, on the agenda items 8A and B, obviously, when I started reading this, I was disturbed that we don't cover leased vehicles at all with any insurance. Now, I realize when you're a big corporation, you can absorb it under self-insured, but I certainly would like some explanation about, I don't know, any studies, and I didn't see anything in that report that indicated this is a cost-effective way to do business. And as a reminder, we just did a very large tax deal with our good friends, the very large insurance company, happens to have my same last name, but we're not related. Perhaps we could have worked a deal with them, I don't know. But it's kind of disturbing that when we have a leased vehicle, we have to pay the full value of that vehicle out of the taxpayer's money, and money, the police budget, that could have gone towards hiring additional police officers or buying a new electric vehicle, which this would have been the majority of the payment on one. So, you know, it's a shame to see this money just go to an uninsured vehicle in an accident. You know, obviously, that's unfortunate, but in the business of the police work, it's high risk and there's going to be accidents. They're out there all the time. So that I kind of question. And perhaps the commission can elaborate on why we do that. I know Mr. Mark Jones, I believe it is, is our risk manager. I don't know if he's available for explanation on that. Is he? And then, okay, in regards to 8B, I got a question. We sent out 60 invitations for bid on the brokerage agreement, and we had, you know, the rule is we have to accept the best. Granted, one's a little higher than the other, but 58 now replies? Are we missing something? Are we sending it the wrong way? Are they not, you know, are we not following up? I mean, you know, getting only two replies out of 60 is, I mean, you expect some people to not reply, but that high a number? We're missing, we're missing it somewhere, I guess. Now, again, I don't know what the highest bid might be if we had, say, 30 or 40 replies, but it would certainly seem more competitive. So anyway, those are the two things I wanted to question on this, and I didn't see any detail in there that would explain that. So, thank you. Thank you. Commissioner?
Hi. Teacher, could you explain 8A for me? Because I actually asked the same thing. Why, when we rent the cars from Enterprise, why don't we carry their insurance? Because it would cover the costs? And you were going to get back to me, and I guess you have an answer.
Yes, thanks, Commissioner Cantu. In reference to this, this question came forward when there, it was discussed that we did have an accident. Previously, the city did not do that for their special details. We have since changed the policy, and we will be purchasing additional insurance to cover our leased vehicles. These are police vehicles that are really, they are undercover vehicles, and it was not, because we're a self-insured organization. Normally, we've had vehicles that were wrecked that never had to come back to you all because we covered them, but we made the decision to purchase the additional insurance after this particular accident, which was not part of the policy beforehand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have no additional speakers for the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion from Commissioner Trager and a second from Commissioner May. We have no additional questions. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay. We'll move on to item number nine, which is our public hearings. Item 9A is the Development Administrative Services Planning Division Victory Temple Special Use Permit. This is a resolution public hearing. A resolution authorizing a special use permit for the establishment and operation of a place of worship used at 1047 Madison Avenue in the SFR 5 zoning district in accordance with Sections 3.4.G and 5.2.B.13.E.I. of the Land Development Code and providing an effective date.
So move.
We have a motion and we have a second. Do we have any questions regarding this matter?
I do have a speaker on this item, Mr. Mayor. It's Ms. Lindsey Elbin.
Hi, my name is Lindsey Elbin. I'm at 1087 Madison. The reason I'm here is not because there is a church being proposed for this lot, but it's more so of what sometimes churches will bring or plan to do at their facility. Food banks or soup kitchens that meet to feed people in person or weekly or monthly, and rehab centers or halfway houses where people with problems with the law and addiction will be staying on the property are my main concern. Me and my neighbors enjoy our neighborhood. We have small children, pets, and we like that the area is pretty calm and safe. There's a nice little park we enjoy walking and playing with our kids at. And it being across the street from this new facility concerns me, because if there's to be a food pantry, soup kitchen, rehab, or halfway house there, the probability of desperate strangers living in the park is very high. And when I got here, when my neighbor said there's already a guy living in the back woods of her, because she lives in front, which is very concerning already, that makes this nice park area a dangerous place for the children and adults. We already have homeless, a homeless man found dead in this park, and occasionally we have people try to live there and they make a mess of the place. But inviting numerous people to be there all the time with the promise of food or shelter will be devastating. I understand that those types of people can be rehabilitated and deserve a chance to do so, but there's plenty of property around, not right in the middle of neighborhoods, near parks, and elementary schools that should be considered. At the last meeting, that was posted on the property itself, we met a nice man who said he was the pastor of this new hopeful facility, and he told us that this would not be used for any of these things, but I'm here to make sure that has not changed. Thank you for your time and consideration.
This is not a redevelopment area. It is a neighborhood. How can we ensure that those uses are not permissible because this, you know, all for churches, but I don't want churches to encroach upon the neighborhoods with these sort of endeavors.
Ms. Mayor, I do, if I recall, I wasn't here, but this was a former halfway house by the state, correct?
I think, I think that it was, but more directly to the question, this is a problem that occurs at churches. It has, you have it at university with the Catholic Church there. You have other facilities. I'm not sure that we have a means of preventing the church, churches from doing what they do in respect to that.
Well, we have a means. And I mean, I'm willing to pass on it and have further discussion personally. We have a means, and this is an issue.
No question. There's no question about it. From the standpoint of the special use permit, I'll let the city attorney speak to that part of it in respect to qualifications for it.
I can tell you that you have in your backup the
Yes, I can tell you that you have in your backup the standard. There are special requirements to submit an application for special use permits, and there's a staff finding that they've met the requirements and a recommendation for approval.
When you say special use permits?
Yes.
It's a quasi-judicial proceeding, Mr. Mayor, and there's criteria in the ordinance that people are supposed to meet, and in terms of staff evaluation, we evaluate pursuant to the criteria within the ordinance.
So, for example, there's been a determination by staff that the location is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, that there's no adverse impacts, there are adequate buffering and parking, et cetera.
Yeah, but it doesn't mean that they won't open a food bank.
Correct.
And a feeding industry, or what we call it, a feeding program. And I agree with her. I don't, I wouldn't, I don't want that in the neighborhood.
We have other restrictions on that, and I don't have it in front of me, but maybe you can speak to the restrictions on churches in terms of their feeding tanks and feeding programs or a number of-
What was the name of the facility formally? What was the name of the facility formally?
No, it was a-
Yeah. And across the street, there's a bit of a pond, little walkway. Okay, so a couple of times I've driven by there, and I've actually called in and taken pictures of a car, a blue car, I believe, person living in the car, two or three people congregating around the car, and some other activities happening inside the car. And I've actually called that in to the police, and I've taken pictures of that particular area already. So I know things are going on there already.
My own observation is it hasn't been a successful operation to try and prohibit it. Wherever churches may be, if they decide to have a feeding program, you've got them scattered throughout the city, and I think it's a recurring problem. Wherever it may be, it's in the parking lot here, not necessarily a problem, but it happens two or three times per week. It happens at the Catholic Church at university, certainly happens at the, I think it's a Methodist church on Harvey Street. It seems, from a standpoint of being effective in precluding it, I don't think there's been an effective means to preclude it. And in the honest answer of application of the way things work out.
Yeah, the only effective measure of precluding it is not to allow them to do it, and then I don't know if you can have some sort of discussion with them that makes it a conditional that those things are not allowed. But as far as I'm concerned, the church on Harvey Street, if I could eliminate those feedings and churches all over that are doing it, even Our Lady of Lords has a problem with it from respect.
If I might.
That I respect their work. All of the churches, I respect their work, but we have to make sure that we protect our neighborhoods. And I, you know, Daytona Beach has a lot of churches, and they have to carry a lot of power that we don't have the ability to influence after they receive their approval.
If I might, Mr. Mayor. It might be advisable, given the opinion you're expressing, if the commission at large feels that way, to continue the item, let the city attorney's office and planning staff work together, come back and give you more thorough and complete answers to the question versus the answers you're getting now, because it isn't an all-inclusive answer, it's an observation, and you've all seen what we all see.
Yeah. I would entertain a motion to continue this, and that was what was headed in-
I move that we continue this.
She made the original motion. If you want to amend your second, then, okay.
Okay, I appreciate that.
We'll get with legal staff, we'll come back to you with a more complete response.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Do we need to do it to a date certain, or just continue the item?
It could be the next meeting. We can, we can do it between now and then.
Okay.
The next two weeks from now.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. And thank you for bringing that to our attention and to our light as a resident. It's your position and where you live is important to us. Okay, and thank you.
So, they need to vote on that motion?
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
So we'll move on to item 9B, which is the Public Works Technical Services Division Preliminary Plat Approval for Timber Creek Village. This is a resolution public hearing. A resolution approving the preliminary plat for the Timber Creek Village project, a mixed-use subdivision on 61.4 plus or minus acres located in the northeast quadrant of Tournament Drive and LPGA Boulevard intersection and providing an effective date.
So move.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second.
And I do have Jessica Gao here on behalf of the applicant.
Okay.
Good evening, Jessica Gao, Cobb Colaw Firm, 149 South Roederd Avenue, Daytona Beach, Florida. I really only got up to mention that the agenda summary and agenda referenced 61 acres, but the plat itself is 63.93, which is correct on the exhibit. So I just want to make sure the resolution has that in the record. But while I'm here, I want to thank staff, because this is an item that has been going back and forth for quite a while, and your staff is very, very busy and very dedicated, and they're an honor to work with every day. So we could answer any questions, but just wanted to make sure that acreage correction is there.
Is this whole plot there, is that wooded?
So there is quite a bit of wetlands on the site that will remain.
How much?
The preserve area noted on the preliminary plat. You can see there's existing conservation easements over it. I don't have the exact wetland acreage for the site.
But they do have to preserve that wetland and not cut down every tree on the property and start over with a couple of palm trees around the edge of the building. Is that correct?
Correct. They're meeting all the city's true preservation requirements.
I'm not sure that's enough.
That may not be much anything, huh, kid?
Right, right, because we've been clearcutting a lot of property around here, and there's no reason to clearcut everything if it's not gonna be parking lot or footprint of the building, and we're not leaving any buffer. They just clear everything from one property line to the other. I would like to see us move to a position of not doing that, simply because it helps with runoff, with flooding, with recharging our water resources, rather than stripping everything and putting three or four palm trees there and saying, you put the trees back. You know, if you're gonna put trees back, put big native trees back, you know, full-grown trees like you're doing in the park down here. I don't know if those are native trees, but anyway, that's expensive to do. It'd be a lot easier not to cut all the trees down and start over.
Right.
Okay.
Well, okay. All right. Is that it?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not opposed to further discussion.
And I'm sorry, Ms. Gao, what was the correction again? It was 63.93?
Point 93, yep.
Mr. Attorney, could you tell us the purpose of the plat approval and what that means, basically?
Sure. The reason, this is a preliminary plat, but the purpose of the plat is just to determine that, that the development meets your general requirements for subdividing the land. So it lays out where all the lots are, it allows the owner to move forward with, with construction permits. So, all your regulatory development permitting has already been done. This just lays out the lot lines, if you will, for subdivision.
The unfortunate reality is that you were right about a lot of what, all of what you said, you know, from my perspective. We, we have to do a little bit better job, but I think that we need to come up with a policy, and so this doesn't impact you. Maybe we should revisit this at the end of the meeting for a discussion of how we wanna do some of that moving forward, because I'm not in disagreement. I'm actually in agreement. Okay.
And there may be just some comfort. If you look at the exhibit, there is one main lot. The site plan's been approved for that by the planning board contingent on this plat approval being issued. And they do cluster all of their true preservation of wetlands in one connected system. So you'll see the commercial out parcels are along ISB there or LPGA there. And then the large multifamily tract is in the remainder, and their, you know, their site plan shows the buildings up front near the commercial, and then there's a large swath of protected wetland area.
Okay, all right. And so-
And my residents, I had a meeting out there, they know about this, they're fine.
Mm-hmm, okay. And, and, you know, I know they're, they're fine, but we gotta have a, you know, and I'm, I live right around from that, and I'm, I'm actually excited about the most, all the commercial development that's going on. I ain't so much, okay. We have a motion, we have a second.
Mayor Henry, before you go, I did have one additional speaker just sign up, Mr. Lewis.
Okay, Mr. Lewis.
They were talking about trees. You were talking about tree. Has anybody inspected this lot, this place? Has anybody walked it? If you haven't, how can you pass it? There's a reason why I'm a tree expert. I'm a master carpenter. If you don't know how the roots in America happens, then you should go out and look at this plot to see if there's any really good trees out there before you pass this. There's a reason why I exist. It's because I do, and I will. I haven't been able to look at it, but the entire reason why I do what I do is because You think I don't think about this? I think about this every single day. I've had people cut down trees that couldn't understand what the language was in the contract, and they cut down all the wrong trees, and they left all the rotten trees to stand. So, how fast can we go and how slow can we go? This is the entire reason I exist now, because I've had you do this to me. You thought you were smart when you were not smart, and you got really quick with me when you shouldn't have got quick with me. So the entire reason why I'm standing here today is because of that reason. It's called history. Major history, military history. There's more women that should've been supported in history than you can ever imagine. So you want to tell me how fast you can go with these trees that are irreplaceable? Thank you.
That was it, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we've heard from both speakers. Do we have any other questions or comments? All right, all those are voting aye, let it be noted, all those in favor, let it be noted by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item number 10, which is our administrative items. Item number 10A is Development Administrative Services Planning Division Caliber Car Wash, I'm sorry, Caliber Car Wash PD Plan Development General. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone 1.12 plus or minus acres of property located at 1111 Bevel Road, which was previously developed as the club member gas station for the former Sands Club store at 1175 Bevel Road, from PDG Plan Development General to PDG Plan Development General. Approving the Caliber Car Wash Plan District Agreement authorizing redevelopment of the property as a retail car wash, subject to certain conditions. Authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreements, repealing all warrants or parts of warrants in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
So move.
I have a motion from Commissioner Cantu and a second from Commissioner Reed.
And I'm very excited about this, because my car wash closed down on Bevel Road, so we need this one. He looked at my car.
So we need this one.
All right. Do we have any questions or comments? We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
The public hearing is set for May 18. We're gonna move on to item 10B. It's the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division Minor Certificate of Appropriateness Land Development Code text amendment. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending Section 3.4. J. 2. B. 0I. A. of the City Land Development Code to clarify the types of awnings and canopies that may be administratively approved via minor certificates of appropriateness, repealing all warrants or parts of warrants in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
So move.
We have a motion from Commissioner May, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Reed. Do we have any questions or comments? No questions, no comments? All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This motion carries 7-0.
Okay, the public hearing is set for May 18. I'll move on to item 10C. It is Development Administrative Services Planning Division Utilities Pretreatment Land Development Code text amendment. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending the City Land Development Code, Section 7.2. P., the city's pretreatment code in LDC, Section 11.5 definitions, to provide pretreatment regulations applicable to dental and pharmaceutical dischargers in accordance with applicable federal and state environmental laws and regulations, repealing all warrants or parts of warrants in conflict therewith, and providing directions to the codifier and providing an effective date.
So move.
Okay, we have a sec first, a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments? Okay. No questions, no comments, got a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
The public hearing is set for May 18. Moving on to item 10D, it's Development Administrative Services Planning Division Addressing Plating Land Development Code text amendment. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending the Land Development Code, Section 3.4. K. relating to subdivision plats, and Section 7.2 relating to required infrastructure modifying existing procedures and standards relating to final plat recording, contracts for plat recording, and required subdivision improvements, repealing all warrants or parts of warrants in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner Cantu. There are no questions? All those in favor, let it be noted.
I would like Mr. Gross to come up and explain this, because this is really gonna help our subdivisions and with the bonds and everything. Thank you.
Good evening, Ben Gross, Deputy City Attorney. This is the Land Development Code provision that was initiated really at Commissioner Cantu's request last year, when she started receiving complaints about sidewalks not being completed and subdivided. And it clarifies some of the provisions of the Land Development Code that we have in place already. Right now, the Land Development Code generally requires all public improvements associated with a subdivision to be finished before somebody can record a plat. We create an exception that if somebody executes contract for plat recording and provides a performance bond, they can defer those improvements. But currently, our code and until recently, our form contract for plat recording didn't provide firm deadlines for the completion of those. The form contract said two years, but there were an endless number of extensions that could be granted. We've already changed our form contract for plat recording in response to Commissioner Cantu's concerns, and these Land Development Code changes reflect what we're already doing with the contracts, which is, we're requiring all the improvements other than certain sidewalks to be done within two years. And for residential subdivisions, we're allowing the sidewalks along the frontage of a residential lot to be deferred further until four years from the date of plat recordation, or until the day they want the CO for the completed home on that lot. Either way, they're still supported by performance bonds, and we just tightened down the language quite a bit.
Up to-
120%, which is what the Land Development Code already required.
Thank you. And just like the Champion one I came before you guys, the sidewalks weren't finished, so this is really gonna help our, us and the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, good work. Good work, staff, good work, Commissioner Cantu. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
The public hearing is set for May 18. Moving on to item 10E, it's the Public Works Technical Services Contract for Plat Recording for Champion's Quarters Resolution. A resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute a contract for plat recording with ADJ Champion's Quarters LLC for the Champion Quarters Project- recording with ADJ Champion's Quarters LLC for the Champion Quarters project and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Cantu and a second from Commissioner Henry.
I have no speakers for this item, Mr. Mayor.
All right. And a motion, no questions. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay. We're going to move on to, this item was 8D that was pulled from the consent agenda. This is the Public Works Technical Services First Amendment to the construction contract for First Step Shelter Site, PNS Paving. It's a resolution. A resolution approving a change order number one to contract number 0318-1140 with PNS Paving, Inc., related to the First Amendment to the construction contract for First Step Shelter Site, to extend the contract time by 21 additional months to allow additional time to complete the work at the First Step Shelter Stormwater Project, authorizing the city manager and the city clerk to execute change order number one and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have questions?
There is no, in our folder, nothing about the original contract. Also, it seems like they have not given us a report completely about how much soil has been taken out. And I believe that 21 months is rather a long time without... They say that because of the COVID, well, the COVID didn't stop all the building around, we can tell you that. So, I don't know what they had, maybe labor-wise, but I think this needs to be looked into a little bit more. And I would like to continue it, maybe to look into it a little bit more.
And I have some questions as well. I wasn't up here when this actually went through, and the whole deal is unconventional to me. But they are actually asking for additional 21 months, and I would like to know why they're asking for 21 months. The contract started June 3, 2019. The contract ends June 3 of 2022. They had 36 months to complete, and they're saying the COVID. But the COVID pandemic didn't start to March 1, 2020, and the governor opened the state back up restaurants and businesses September 29, 2020. So, that's six months. So, I can see if we were going to give them additional time, I mean, six months, but I don't see why we are giving 21 months. So, I like that to be answered. But, I mean, why the other 15 months?
Okay.
I just would like a better accounting.
And then, as well, with the market rate right now, I believe the city could actually get more money. I mean, I'm thinking $2, $2.50 for the remaining. So, that's my personal. I'm not sure what my colleagues think, but...
Well, from my perspective, I have no problem with the fact that we could get more, but I wouldn't want to establish a thing where we were trying to cut out on someone that we made a good faith deal with before. That doesn't mean that we have to do 18 months. I mean, I'm open to the full discussion, but I just don't know that I agree with saying, well, because we can get more money now, we should necessarily move out.
Well, that's why I said I'm not sure how my colleagues feel, but I don't agree on 21 months because building was still going on during COVID.
Yeah, and they were working. They were rolling. They were. But you want to answer a question and then come back to it?
Yeah. When Andy gets through, I'll talk. Is that all right?
Oh, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, absolutely. Go ahead, Andy.
Good evening, commissioners. Mr. Mayor, Andy Holmes, Public Works. I do want to say on the question of accountability that PNS has provided a monthly summary of yardage removed every month to public works since the inception of the excavation. In addition to that, they did front all of the money for the permitting for the project and all of the money to construct the roadway, the access road, the haul road where the material comes out, and they've maintained it continuously in good condition the entire time. I believe they've acted in good faith, and they have fronted a considerable amount of expense, which I would be very surprised if they've recovered yet. They've only removed about 433,000 yards of material so far from the site out of the initial phase, which is 1.5 million yards. The first half of Phase 1 of the project was about 750,000 yards, and that was payable to the city at $1.50 per yard, and they paid us in advance the first billion-plus dollars. So, that money has been out, has been in our hands for three years. And so, I believe they've acted in good faith. There is supposed to be a representative of PNS Construction here tonight to support their request and answer questions. Is that individual present?
Okay. Mr. Curtis Long is present, and he'd be happy to respond to questions as well. He has further detail on how PNS is administering a project and why they requested the time that they did.
Okay. We'll hear from him, but if there are no further questions for Andy, Ken, do you have a question of them or do you want to just talk?
I just want to talk, point out a few things.
All right.
So I can wait.
Yes. You can either wait or point them out you want to wait for. I'm on up, Mr., what was his name? Long? Mr. Long? In and out. You can just...
Well, Mayor, I would like my question answered about the 21 months. Why?
And sir, if you can state your name for the record. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Curtis Long. I'm with PNS Paving.
Yes, sir. Okay. The question?
My question was, you're requesting additional 21 months, and I'm just curious, because you said from the pandemic, but that's what I'm curious. Why the extra 15 months? I mean, because the pandemic has started March 1, 2020, and then the governor opened it, everything back up on September 25 of 2020.
Yes, ma'am. I'll agree with that assessment, but I would like to point out, too, that even as early as 2022, there were some 3 million residents in Florida less employed than there were. So, although the governor opened the economy back up, we didn't return to full speed. Specifically, those developments that were happening that got put on pause during COVID didn't respond as quickly. There is a lagging indicator from the governor making this proclamation to being back at full speed. Furthermore, there's been significant inflationary pressures, workforce pressures, and just other general pressures on the development market that have caused those projects, although the projects that were already in the pipeline are continuing to be developed, which is what you see on the street. The allocation of those resources that are going towards future projects, that is that lull. So, what we looked at is we calculated how many yards that was reasonable and anticipated to be moved per day under the original agreement, looked at what we were able to do, and the project was going along very well for those seven months prior to the COVID determination, and then looked at the impact of that. And we, the math, which was provided to staff, actually calculates out to 25 months. But we wanted to put, you know, not just hand that to the city and say, this is all the city. We took three months back from that in an acknowledgement that we need to try to accelerate that process to meet those goals.
I agree that you should get some additional months. I still don't agree 21 months, but that would be to the rest of my colleagues as well. But thank you.
Do we have additional questions?
You said there was inflationary?
That's correct. You know, for...
Go ahead.
You know, just some recent indicators. You know, we're talking about commercial developments. The lead time on roofing materials is 18 to 24 months without being able to establish any current pricing. We're seeing the same kind of pricing pressures on PVC pipe, trucking, fuel. You know, fuel six months ago was $3.80, and it's $5.25 now. So, those kind of inflationary pressures make it hard for especially commercial environments for them to set lease and rent rates to see if the project's viable.
I understand that. But if there's inflationary things to cost of other materials, shouldn't we be able to inflate our cost or what we get for our dirt under those same circumstances? The dirt should not be allowed to continue to be sold at pre-inflationary prices. We've got the same problems. We have bills we have to pay for the city, and we've been charged with being responsible for the city business. So, therefore, I think we should, if we're going to continue a relationship with your company, we should raise, be able to collect more money and raise the price per square yard. Also, let me find it here. Well, maybe I can't find it. But at any rate, I, you know, there was some, in a news journal article from 2018 or 19, you know, there's some different prices that were going on. This was done three or four years before the building boom. So, you know, to be able to raise our prices would make good sense. If I live in an apartment complex, a new owner takes it over, when my lease is out, they raise that price. I can either stay there and pay that, or I can move on and I can find somebody else that will pay that price. And I think this, we're at the end of a contract. You're asking for an extension or renewal. We should be able to negotiate a higher price. That's where I stand with it, if we're going to extend it, or we can either end it and put it out for bids again.
Can I ask Andy another question, please?
Andy Holmes, Public Works.
I didn't see what he was saying that you've seen, the 21 months. Do you think it was, it's fair to ask for 21? I mean...
I do, because there's, even though the official end of the pandemic only took maybe six months, the peripheral effects from it took a lot longer, and the construction process has slowed down considerably. And so, if you don't have a place to take the material, you can't dig it out of the ground and haul it anywhere. And so, there are some residual or peripheral effects on schedule, and staff did review, our staff did review this, and we agree with the 21 months. In addition, some of the material that we're talking about, they paid us already for in advance.
That's a problem.
Thank you, Andy.
Three years in advance. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say I totally trust Andy and his judgment in regards to this 21 months. He said that they've been in a good faith effort throughout the time period. I personally have been impacted by materials being slow. I can't get my two-gar garage added onto my house because of the cost of some materials. So, it's perfectly understandable. PNS has been a great partner for us for years. They're the best in the business in this city. So, I think we should extend this, at least this is my opinion, and just hold them accountable for that time period.
Okay. Well said. Any other comments? Mr. Strickland, any other questions? We have some speakers, so I'll reserve my comments until after the speaker.
Okay. First speaker is Vernon Weatherholt, and on deck is John Nicholson.
I hate to disagree. I know that when the original contract, it was a very lucrative contract for the contractor. It was below price to start off with, and with the public works director. Have they given you their load tickets, or has the city went out and surveyed the pit to see how many cubic yards have been taken out? That's first.
Andy Holmes, Public Works. They do an aerial survey every month. They can do that with a drone now, and the calculations are done by computer, and we verify that. So, we're confident that the numbers are correct.
Second of all, when they started taking out the dirt, and even though the coronavirus, they had their contracts already in place before the coronavirus, and they didn't anticipate something that was going to be done in the future. So, I think it was great that they paid in advance. If I had a yardage price at that, I would pay you in advance, too. I think that's a very cheap price that the city, but that's here and there. That's history. I don't think that they should be allowed to extend another 21 months. I think that that's unreasonable at this price, and that's my opinion. This is the taxpayers' money, and I think that the city has to be accountable for this. You're, I see the look on your face, Mayor.
Well, because I have to think about what you're saying. My look is a look of thought and contemplation.
I can tell. But I think that the 21 months, if you're going to extend it this far, whatever they've paid for, I think they should be able to take that price. Anything other than that, I think that, and give them a shorter period of time to do it, but anything other than that, I think that the city should be allowed to raise the cost. And building material is just starting to get, be higher right now, since I'm a general contractor, and I know the prices have been up. But when they had the contract, the prices weren't up. Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Nicholson, and on deck is Doyle Lewis.
John Nicholson, 413 North Cranberry Avenue. You've got to remember where we started with this and why we're doing what we're doing. Remember, we were in the hole, okay? I understand, Ken, that they should be paying more, because everything would cost more. And it's never been brought up to you guys, what are they charging for this soil that we're getting $1.50 for? Are they getting, in the past, they were talking about $16 a yard. So, they'd pay us $1.50 and turn around and sell it for 16. But nobody said how much they really are selling it for, but that should be part of it. Secondly, we started a contract, and yes, nobody anticipated the coronavirus. They've been working. There's a house a couple blocks from mine on A1A. Three and a half years, they just got their garage doors. They're not ready for occupancy yet. That happens all over the city. So, their argument that those houses are not going in is valid. Everything they're saying is valid. The only question is, should we penalize them for something that they had no control over? As far as I'm concerned, when we got First Step Shelter, that was to our advantage. We would not have gotten that. Mayor, you know that, all right? It was way above cost. We were not anticipating $7, $8 million for that. This $2 million from them helped us tremendously. It helped our city. It helped Beachside. It was a place to go. It helped our neighboring cities because they had a place to send their people, their homeless people. Our city gained tremendously through this contract, so I'm asking you to give them the leeway. To think about what they've given us and what we've benefited from, I think more than outweighs the difference that they're going to gain for these 21 months. Thank you.
Okay. Our next speaker is Doyle Lewis, and on deck is, our next speaker is Ann Lewis, or Doyle Lewis, sorry.
Doyle Lewis on deck is Ann Rubin.
Good evening.
Is this the one you're signing up for? Okay. Sorry, Doyle.
My name is Doyle Lewis. I live in Daytona Beach, United States. I am a homeless man. Think about that. Penis paving. Made sure that shelter was built. And you want to question them? And you want to question PNS Paving when they built that shelter? They worked. They lost lives building it. I know one of them that died. Yes. Yes, I do. And you want to question their ability to understand how to buy and sell dirt in Daytona I'm still homeless because I won't put up with somebody explaining to me why I live in a house when you won't let me build one in Daytona Beach. in a house when you won't let me build one in Daytona Beach. I've studied all the builders around here and they don't like me. There's a reason why I pause. It's so you can hear my heartbeat. Are you listening? Are you hearing me? You extend this contract or you don't have a heart. My name is Doyle Wayne Lewis. God bless you.
Okay. And our final speaker is Ann Ruby.
Ann Ruby, 137 Park Avenue. This is a really, really complex issue because it, it seems like we're talking about we're money we're not getting, but we're getting money. That's, we're, we're getting this money. We could be asking for more money. Some people are saying that would be nice if we decided we wanted to do that. But the first thing I want to say is that I wish Andy's backup had been included with the original documentation so that it would be very clear what they were taking out per month. Because the volume taken out, the money we're going to receive is really an unknown since it's based on time. I mean, there's no, there was no set cap. They can take, you know, five cubic yards. It's based on the time of June 2nd and now it will be based on the time of 21 months. So it would be nice to know that amount and we don't have that information right now. The other thing that, the, the contract was never, to me, very clear. And part of the lack of clarity was that, or lack of accountability, is that in the resolution that you guys voted on, it said the, you agreed to those low prices, the prices that, I forgot, they called it the, whatever price it was, the price per yard, you agreed to that because they assumed the cost for the permitting, the building of the hall road and negative market conditions. They assumed that risk. That was part of the low price they agreed to pay us. Now they want to come back and pay us the same price, but ask for an extension of time. Does anybody else see how this is kind of a conflict or something not clear, not really being accounted for? And I don't know quite where I sit on this, but I just think we don't have, I don't have a clear sense on this and I don't know how anybody else can have one either. But the other thing I would like to say is since we are getting this money, maybe this is money we could put into a fund to take care of some of our properties that have been neglected. Since it's going to be found money literally dug out of dirt, I think it could be viewed as a win if we put it towards something that we thought was useful. Thank you.
I don't have any additional speakers.
Do we have any other comments or questions? Ms. Ruby is correct. I think it's a very complicated issue. But I think that the first thing is that you have to always, as a city or when you have a company like PNS, who has been a longstanding partner of ours and who was a partner in this process. They were a partner because as Mr. Nicholson properly illustrated, we were in the red on the shelter. And you have to remember that we were in the red. The shelter was going to be built. We had the money whether we were in the red or not. So let's not say that it wasn't going to be built. It was going to be built. But in order to make the construction costs more palatable to all of us, we went down this road. Yes, we could have went into the dirt business. But how many of us would have liked going into the dirt business? It would not have cost, yes, 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 the builders in the house. It would have cost us more than $2.50 per cubic yard because there's so much more involved in the process. So you're not looking at a simple equation of it's $2.50. It could have been $4.50 or $5.50 when you talk about the things that they had to do in order to, to do the excavation. So that, all of that makes it complicated. But what it, what all of that does for me is that when you operate with someone in good faith, you should never turn around and then because you have them sort of over the barrel, choose to try and operate in what I would refer to as, not good faith, at least at a minimum, I would actually say it's, it's bad faith. Because you, you have an opportunity and you've, you got them now. We got them back. People said that you, you, they got too good of a deal. So now you got them, so you got them, so get them. They're still partners of ours. Now, I don't know how much money they're making off of the, the dirt at the end of the day. And we live in a capitalistic society where it is based upon, you know, you take risks, you get a bigger reward sometimes. And sometimes you lose out. And it's rather, we have to determine whether we want to penalize a good partner of ours who came in at a moment when they didn't have to. And let's be, let's remember, yeah, they took a risk, but they're a successful company. Extremely successful and probably the only one, while others around here say, I would have taken it, I would have taken the deal. There's probably no other company around here that does this work that could have stepped up and, and met the, all of the standards that they met and paid us ahead of time. You know, and so for me, it comes down to what type of, you know, what type of business partner do I want to be? It's not an easy equation, but at the end of the day, I think we should be a good business partner. And if you, for me, if it's 21 months, it's 21 months. What's the difference in 21 months and six months or 18 months? If they think it takes them 21 months, 21 months. But at the end of the day, the most important question is, what type of business partner are we when someone stepped up and worked with us when they didn't have to? So, yes, sir?
I have one more.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, one more question for, for the gentleman from PNS paving. I don't want to know dollars and cents, just yes or no. Did y'all increase the price that you sell the dirt for?
Yes, we actually decreased the price in an effort to move the material faster to keep. Drop the price.
And, and let's, let's remember, this property is not being used. It's not being used, it's not costing us anything. It's, it's no skin off of our back. So if, if, you know, if you were in the dirt business, if we going into the dirt business, we wouldn't be any further ahead. We'd be far, far further behind than they are. We would not have made the profit off the dirt that we've made. So we've profited. Yes, ma'am? I thought you had, you had a question.
But I do, actually. Like I said, I wasn't here for the initial vote on this. I do think it was unconventional. I mean, my personal opinion and I believe, I mean, it was not piggybacked. But I do agree if we, my colleagues agree that we keeping them. I really don't agree on the 21 months, but I do feel they should give some time. And if that's what my colleagues say, I mean, so be it. But I still didn't like how the deal was brought down.
Well, and you're right, it was unconventional. I don't want to disagree with that, but it was an unconventional time. Okay? The prices of the, the shelter skyrocketed way beyond what the county gave us and the prices of everything skyrocketed. I don't want to build anything on this city's dime right now.
Right.
I'd rather wait till, it was a lot cheaper to build those two community centers during the Great Recession than it would be today.
And I do just.
Two million, three million, they probably cost us 10, 12 million now.
Right. I also do just, I disagree as well. There is other companies out there that would probably put out a bid. But I'm going to go along with my colleagues, I mean, because I wasn't here for the initial vote on this.
I don't know about that.
But.
Okay. All right, I'm done. Do you have any other comments? All right, we have a motion, we have a second. We'll take a roll call vote.
Okay. Commissioner Trager.
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Strickland.
No.
Commissioner May.
Yes.
Commissioner Cantu.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry.
Yes.
Okay, that passes.
Motion passes 6-1?
Yep.
All right.
Okay.
Does that conclude our?
Well, we have one more item that were, was added to the agenda and this is the resolution appointing one member to the Orange Avenue Recreation Center Committee for a term ending August 3rd, 2022. This appointment is for Commissioner Paula Reed. And do you want to speak to that?
I'd like to appoint Carolyn Sanders James as my representative for that board.
You have a second? Motion will take a second from Commissioner May. Do we have any public speakers?
I don't have any public speakers on this.
All right. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0. At this time, we will hear from the members of the commission, Commissioner Trager.
I'd like Mr. Jagger to give us an update on the Bridgeport River Approach problem.
I'd be glad to. Yes, I've been in contact with Mr. Schnapp and Stoller, their attorney, and also Jessica Gao, who was here earlier. We, we've agreed to the form of the settlement now. I just received the attachments, which was the survey today, so that will be on your next agenda.
Could we have the agenda in plenty of time that we can review it and, I mean, the, the contract?
The contract will be published with the regular agenda and of course, it'll be a public record for anyone who wishes to request it.
Basically, what is it right now? I know we, I talked with some of the neighbors and their basic thing is they want it back as much as possible as it was before. No restrictions.
Right. So that is, that is the intent of the agreement, but you'll recall that title actually passed to them under law when we vacated the right of way. So it's a little more complicated than unvacating the right of way. We've got to actually deed the property back to the city and then we're placing some requirements on the site that it not be developed, that it maintain its current passive park type setting, that it allow pedestrian access, exactly how it's always been.
Well, I think that's basically what the neighborhood wanted. And when would we be getting that contract, do you know?
It, will go on your next agenda.
Next agenda. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Strickland.
Is this a time we can talk about the trees and the clear cutting and that sort of thing?
Well, this is your appointed time to talk about whatever you would like. And what I would suggest is that you maybe sit down and talk with, because there are, there are ways to consider how you abate or stop some, all of the clear.
Right.
And there, and, and, you know, in hindsight, I wish that, that, that had been brought before us prior to now. But at any rate, I think that you want to have a plan and give it some deep thought.
Okay.
And, and then come back and.
It's, it's just, you know, as I drive around and I, I see places that were once a beautiful forest, then they level it and, you know, the next thing you see is houses in there and then you'll see a few palm trees, a retention pond, and that doesn't really speak to our needs as far as green, green space. It doesn't speak to our needs as far as recharge area for our aquifer. And anyway, that's, that's my thoughts on that. I would, I would also like for us to, in the future, have, have a little more information on, on certain things and I'll speak with the city manager about that next time we have a little sit down, if he'll still sit with me.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
I, I will be glad to circulate if you like, your landscaping and tree preservation requirements, just to give you a base to start from.
Thank you.
I think that's a good idea and I, I think it would be a good idea if we have a, a workshop on this item because it's that, that important. Although I'd be honest, dishonest if I didn't say we're behind on it. But it is where we are. Huh? Yeah. Okay.
I have a question. Has our retreat been rescheduled?
We were going to be sending out some dates to you all to choose for that weekend retreat.
All right. Because perhaps this can be a discussion because that's usually an all-day thing, so.
Yeah. Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Yes. So I really enjoyed the Seafoods Festival and it was a pleasure to be there. I thought it was a well-attended event, so thank you very much for coming. And I wish I had seen, I wish I had seen more people there. I know just, it was a good event. I enjoyed it. Number one. Number two is on Saturday morning, there was a beautification project that was held on Walnut and Aberdeen Street. Really good job. Approximately 11 homes received beautification from Home Spring Hope. I saw the two homes that are going up in Zone 3 and they're really going to increase the surrounding value of the properties. They're beautiful homes. I liked what they did and I would very much like to see if we can do something like that in Zone 3, but working with some of the groups as well. So I'm kind of working on the groups that would maybe be involved. I made a few calls today and then I'll speak with somebody on how I can use my CARES money to maybe do, I'd like to do, if I can, 10 streets in Zone 3 that need some tender loving care. I think you enjoyed it. I thought it was a good project. I know they're also putting up another house on Spruce, so that'll be exciting also. In terms of the CARES money, I've given it some thought. And I will say, I've received some fantastic feedback from the neighbors on Beachside. I really appreciate their feedback. I've heard things about improving the dog park. I've heard things about adding a fitness outdoor facility to it and also talk of a community garden. And the city manager and I spoke today and there's only so much I can do with one park. There's only so much we can bring to that area. So right now, I'm heading toward the dog park concept, maintaining that. And I would like to put a small community garden in Lenox Park because I think it'd be a way for the neighbors to get together and, and really promote an idea. And unfortunately, Ms. Jenny Nasek left because I was going to ask her if she would help in maintaining it, getting it situated, getting it organized. I think it's a project that's really well-suited for her, should she accept it. If there's anybody else interested, maybe a master gardener, anything along those lines, I would welcome that also. But the goal is to have the community take ownership of the area and meet and talk like they do with the dog park. It's a very active little park. Thank you so much to Public Works. They've really put up with me a lot in the past two weeks, so on a regular basis. Okay, look, I have a habit. As soon as I see something, I send an email. I am going to cease and desist this behavior. I will not do this. What I will do is I will use my trusty notebook given to me, we all have one, and I'll only send one email. But understand, it's going to come from one community at a time. So I know exactly what's going on in each zone. You'll notice it's focused right now in the Lexington area. So with regard to Lexington, when you go to Caribbean Jacks, I'd like to know from other people as well, whether they perceive danger there. And what that means is the Sweetheart Trail, I recognize goes right through Blue Road, goes through Rio Vista, goes through the Lexington area, but navigating the intersection of Anita Gov, Rio Vista and Lexington, it's not a good intersection. When you pull your car out, you don't see, there's not enough clearance from the road to the sidewalk to see the cars coming and your car is already in the middle. So if we could do something, I'm not sure what we can do. I've asked about the mirror, reflective mirrors. You can maybe see what's coming down the road, but every single resident I spoke to in that area, that was a major topic of concern. Do you have any thoughts, sir? That was one of my emails. I'm sorry. I happened to be there like a week.
Andy Holmes, Public Works. We're going to take a look at that intersection in that area. There's two or three intersections there and we'll take a look and see if there's some improvements that could be made there.
Super. And then also, interestingly, we have a bicycle path that's going through residential neighborhood. And the appearance, they sent you pictures, is that it's only a bicycle path, but it's not. It's a driving lane. And that's going through Rio Vista. So it goes from Main Street, Sweetheart Trail, it hits an actual road, Rio Vista, and it looks like it's only designed for bicycles, but it's not.
It's supposed to be a multi-use path. We'll take a look at that and see if there's something we can do to clarify the information for the users of the entire facility.
Or just the bike concept, if that's even possible. Okay? That would be, that would. Okay, that would be that would be nice, that's what the neighbors would want when they're turning left and right. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we'll take a look at it, thank you.
And then also, um, I was looking at another community garden. I think it's a really good educational tool for young people, students especially, I think it's a good community tool, so I'd like to consider what I would have to do and what it would cost to put a community garden in between Campbell and Turi T, which would allow the students from both schools to access it and walk. I think the goal is to walk between the two facilities, able to access it, utilize it, maintain it, and maybe have some of the community members also maintain it. I want to know the cost, if I'm going to use CARES money for it. And then also, I have another question, so I recognize that we all have these here. Uh, I know that in Zone Three, I'm going to be doing the doorbell camera concept. I'd like to know how this program works, please, in terms of do I get are these for my residents, and I'm allotted this many, and I give it to them? What how do we work these application forms exactly? Thank you, sorry, could I get an explanation on that, please? Thank you. Also, just some background, the reason I'm doing it is that as I go and meet with residents, um, I find that I have seniors who don't want to come to the door, the areas are unsafe, and I'm especially looking at my uptown area, uptown midtown area, and I'd like I see a lot on Beachside, I think they're a great idea, but I'd like to see them more um in my uptown area.
Drew Driscoll, Deputy City Manager and Fire Chief. Uh, yes, our door, the door camera um program um being provided by Commissioners May, Strickland, and Henry uh is launching on Monday. It is currently on our website, the application will be made available to whomever starting Monday. Uh, through the process, we're gonna clarify that they are in the targeted areas that you wish, um, and that they reside in your zone. However, there are requirements for these people, uh, they must be sixty-five years of age or greater, uh, they must have Wi-Fi access in their home, have a smartphone, be willing to pay the um subscription fee to utilize the camera, and then also be willing to share that information with the police department um in case a crime happens, there's a way to download that video and assist law enforcement.
I have a question, do we each get, so how much have I attributed contributed to this from my CARES money? How much am I spending from it?
You're spending five thousand dollars for five fifty cameras.
Super, so I'm gonna tell you my plan, if I could get some help, that would be great. What I would like to do is on the areas that are, I'm gonna go to the residents, and I'm gonna say, look, if you find you're having a a problem in your area, and I know exactly where to go, I think that having four or so cameras per street would give us enough coverage where if the police needed to download the information, they could. Is that fair?
Yes, Captain Byron Williams is actually heading up the program, and him and Deputy Chief Wittit are actually looking at the applicants, those requests.
Okay.
And trying to help strategically locate to assist them in getting a broad perspective.
Yeah, and so I would like for the area in Zone Three to be strategic placement, because we already have residents on that street or in certain areas that I know have them, but if we could do it that way, it's really designed for me to help the police in dealing with crime issues.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, super.
Commissioner, before you continue, I'd like to say this was a wonderful idea brought to us by Commissioner Henry. I'd like to perhaps pursue this for Zone Six as well, if we could discuss that further.
Yes, we can.
Okay, but but here's what I would also like, while this is your time, that's the kind of work that you gotta you you go back and you guys work that out, you know, in your not in your secret meeting, but with the staff, because you have to bring in the staff. So just work that out, and you all do the do the same, you know, just work it out.
Good, thank you so much, thank you. And then.
We also, there are some concerns that I'm gonna be meeting with um Drew about about how can we get it where it's not just for sixty-five and older? So those are things we're trying to look at, because there may be I I there may be a family uh that we need to look at, but it's a lot of um things that we have to look at, but that is something we will just discuss as if we are, we can go up under that sixty-five age, because there may be a younger couple or something that needs it.
Strategic placement, I just wanted to cover the areas as best I can, thank you. And then finally, um, I've been waiting to share this, and I'm happy to have the Chief of Police share it if you want to, someone can share it, I'll share it. Ridgewood has been an area of concern for me for the longest time, which is why the the um the ring system is kind of important for me in that area. So I believe it's now appropriate time to tell everybody, and I think you all know that we are expecting a substation in the Ridgewood area, and I think it's going to be a huge help. Remember, a few weeks back, I had a resident come back, um, Ms. Hicks, I believe, and she was questioning why we weren't doing anything over on Ridgewood. And the reality is, is that this was already in the works, but we just couldn't talk about it yet, and I think we're now at a moment when we can actually openly discuss it, so sometimes, you know, when you come to commission, there are things that are going on, that are taking place, but it's just not solidified yet. But as of this moment, if somebody could speak to the substation on Ridgewood, I would appreciate it. It's actually going to impact North Street quite a bit, and I will say that whenever I meet somebody from another city, I ask them, you know, what do you think about, you know, our homeless situation, and they always mention the same area. And then someone has said to me, you know, it's always been like that, so I think this will go a long way, so could you speak to that, please?
Just say the police chief and his team have been strategically working to find out where are the appropriate locations for a substation, and we're going to be um placing one at the corner of Ridgewood and North Street. Um, it's the current blue building, but also the grand view will be coming out on Beachside, so this is something that Police Department has strategically done, and I think the City Attorney Office has the contracts that will be coming forward to you all in the next couple of weeks.
And I think that this will be appreciated by residents uh to both the east and west of that Ridgewood corridor, and so my goal, again, with some of my CARES money, is going to be to to do a little bit more work on the Ridgewood corridor. I think this is a great start, and I'd like to continue the push to help with the Ridgewood corridor. Thank you.
Commissioner May, if I might, Mayor, I know you're interested in sponsoring through your Bike Week funds a Mother's and Father's Day event, that did not make it on the agenda.
WM on the River, I believe is the name of the organization, WM Windsor Valley, but it go with WM on the River, and it's two seniors, it's it's Senior Awareness Month also, as well as Mental Health Awareness Month. So we're doing something for Mother's Day and then also Father's Day.
Do you have dates for those?
Um, it's Tuesday for Mother's Day, and the seventeenth, I believe, of Father's Day.
All right, so we'll need a motion to um include those in the resolution that was approved tonight for Bike Week sponsorship. Yeah, how much?
I think it's at two fifty per.
Two fifty per event?
Yes.
Is that seventeenth in June, the month of Father's Day? Okay, and the month is today.
Okay, do we have a motion? Motion from Commissioner Traeger?
Second.
Motion from Commissioner Traeger, second from Commissioner Reed. Do we have additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of that, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
And for the record, no public comment as well. Thank you.
Anything else? No? Okay, we'll move to Commissioner Cantu.
Okay, I just have a few things. First first of all, Commissioner Henry, that was a great idea. I wish I still had money left. No, yeah, it's red now. What I was saying, that was a great idea, Commissioner Henry. I wish I still had money left, but I was been happy.
You did a good job, you did a good job.
Okay, um, I have a few things. First of all, I was watching the planning board, um, I'm happy about a project that's gonna be coming before us on June first. Um, the INA Group, which is three hundred and fifty-two units um out there towards LPGA, and the reason I'm happy about this is the Dunn Extension. They are gonna pay a part of that Dunn Extension, and actually, it was already on our workshop approved, so, and then also, we got the Integrated LPGA, which is another six hundred, which will be helping with that Dunn Extension, and then it'll be up to the county and city, and I'm hoping our city manager is working that out. Okay, so um another thing I have is, I'm sure all of you guys, everyone up here received this letter from the States in Pelican Bay. Okay, and I would like this um city attorney to address this letter for me.
Well, I have reviewed it, um, and I've talked to Commissioner Cantu about the content, some of the the factual assertions in there, we've had a hard time verifying in terms of what was passed um in this in Palm Coast.
I guess I guess we need to back up, it's about the putt and our golf courses.
Thank you, yes, and you all got it, so I assumed you knew what it was about, but I know the public's not, but it's essentially a letter from um a homeowners association within Pelican Bay requesting that the city impose some extra regulations over the existing golf courses, one of which is operational, the other of which is is not. Um, those are currently zoned for golf course use and for no other use, but they're seeking to impose what they refer to as restrictive covenants over top of that, and uh that raises a number of legal questions, of course, so I'll be glad to respond to that and circulate uh that response to the commission, just for your information, if you'd like, it's up to you.
Yes, I would like you to, so I can circulate back to the Master Association, because this is a sub-association from a master, and you know, we all, all the my colleagues received from the Master Association, anything that has to do with Pelican Bay, they are the one that represents Tom Mahagan, and Tom K. Kay, the president from the States, does not represent our master. So I would like to have both your response, so I can send his response and your response to the Master Association.
Very good, as long as there's no objection, I'll be glad to do that.
Everyone okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, and is that about it? I think that was it.
All right.
Thank you, and in response to city manager talking about the ring cameras for the sixty-five, uh, that was one of my concerns, I think we talked about it a while ago, I wanted to ensure that um everyone who financially needed to be able to have a ring camera could have access to one, uh, so thank you for addressing that, and if 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 necessary, I'm willing to do additional cameras for the community. So I just think that that's such a uh great opportunity in in my objective of crime suppression in in that community, definitely helping with some of the speeding so that the uh Police Department will be able to see some of this speeding, which is the the biggest complaint that I'm getting right now. Um, also, some very exciting news. Happy to announce that three students in the class of twenty twenty-two at Mainland High School will be able to apply for the scholarship, and in order to get the scholarship from some of my um funds, all you need to do is be a student at Mainland Senior High School, be graduating in the class of twenty twenty-two, and write an essay of two hundred and fifty words or more that talks about how COVID affected you and how you overcame that COVID that challenge. Um, so we're giving three five hundred dollar scholarships to students at Mainland High School. We gave one five hundred dollar scholarship to a student at um Atlantic High School as well, and I I think I'm gonna give one more to a student at Atlantic High School, although there aren't very many students that attend Atlantic that live in my zone, so I don't know if that would be feasible. Um, pretty much the majority of the students are zoned for Mainland High School, so that's why I gave three to Mainland High School. So I would love it if if you know a senior that's at Mainland High School, have them to go out, there's no minimum GPA, because this is strictly about how COVID influenced, how how COVID affected them and how they overcame um something that happened during COVID.
Wait, did you mention that it had to be accepted?
It's all on the application. So you have to be accepted in to college.
Yeah.
Um, already going to school, and the funds will be released at that time.
Yeah, okay.
Upon um you officially enrolling.
Yeah.
Officially enrolling at school, the funds will be released, and they can be used for whatever the student needs, books, housing, whatever they choose. The Seafood Festival was a big success, it was wonderful, I thought it was very well-attended. Um, I personally supported the Seafood Festival by being a vendor at the event. My booth stayed busy the entire day, I was sweating, I was hot, but I was there, and I was, it was just such a wonderful opportunity uh to see so many people from far and near come and support that Seafood Festival. I can't wait to see it next year, because I know it's gonna be even bigger, and we're probably gonna have to stretch out that road a little bit more, because that's how successful it was, and I am, thank you, Ms. Reed and Ms. Presley, for allowing me to participate and to vend at the event.
Make it be clear, you paid to vend.
I paid by vendor's fee. I said I supported the event by vending, so I paid by vendor's fee, but um but very very wonderful opportunity, um, lots of activities for families, for the children, bounce houses, I think they had um. Yes, the bounce track thingy, and it pretty really neat, so congratulations to Commissioner Reed and Ms. Presley on that event. Also, last thing is, if you want the ring cameras, um, as city manager stated, it goes on the, it's on the website now, right? It is on the website now, I do have some applications with me. Um, this particular one is is the one that's gonna be for sixty-five years of age or older, but as he said stated, we are going to um address issues of those needing those cameras for sixty-five and under. And one last issue that I would like to discuss, and that is, uh, what is being, I've I've talked to, is anyone here from the Police Department? I'd like to address the concerns of the speeding in my zone, um, and I want to see what what they're doing, if as far as are they setting speed traps? Should I be looking forward to those speed traps, because it's.
Speed enforcement opportunity.
Speed enforcement opportunities.
Yeah, we we will, I I we we looking at the areas, and we'll get with Andy also, because he's the one that assists us in putting up the the speed, sorry.
The the machine, but we will we'll follow up with you, um, it's best for us not to just tell everyone police are out, so we will share that information with you.
Yes, I need very aggressive, aggressive speed enforcement opportunities in my zone. It is the biggest concern right now, it is the thing that I get the most complaints about, and the children are out, the weather is nice, it's beautiful, and they're outside, they're playing, they're in the streets, they're bouncing their balls, and I just want to make sure that we're addressing that.
If you could share with me the exact streets, we will definitely put.
Zone five, no, I'm just joking.
We'll get with the offline.
Thank you. Uh, that's all of my issues tonight, thank you very much.
One thing I I've been going back and forth, and I think I've been patient, I want some aggressive going on with that RFP for that cell phone tower out there on LPGA. Can we work on that a little faster? Thank you.
I live out there, remember, I don't have a signal.
Every day, I go out right on the bridge.
Right, he has, he, see, he lives out there.
Every, I'm on the phone with my wife, I'm going out on the bridge.
And I know that I.
Comes the bridge.
Right, I know they're working on it, but let's let's speed it up just a little bit more. Thank you.
Yeah, all right.
Today, we had a wonderful celebration of life for one of our mothers of our city, a matriarch of Midtown, Julia Mae Troutman Cherry. You talk about a celebration of life, it was not a funeral. It was a beautiful experience, and I thank God that I was able to be there and to just share in the experience of those who who were able to share how she impacted their lives. As you know, her husband sat in my seat, and she stood by him through all of his political aspirations, and just the um the lives that she touched, it was a beautiful thing. She was a lady in every sense of the word, and she was a delta. Food brings hope. Yes, Commissioner May and I on Saturday had an opportunity uh to judge along, I took Keith Willis along with me, he got dragged along, um, to judge uh the experiences for the homes on Albertine and on Walnut that they're building, but let me tell you, you talk about a wise investment of our CARES funds. I was so impressed with what they were doing, not only are they building a home on those streets, but they had a competitive opportunity for business. for businesses to address the landscaping of the other homes on the street, which is what we were judging, the landscaping that they did. So they're not just building a brand-new home, but they're beautifying the homes on the street so that it, you know, is appreciated with the new home that's coming. And on the Walnut Street, the young lady was on one of the teams that said, "That's my house that they're building on the corner." She was so proud. It was a two-story home, she said, "For me and my daughters." And when we addressed the individuals, as we were giving out the awards on who we had identified as doing the best work, I said, "Today, you've changed lives." You know, one lady was an elderly lady who wanted the work done but couldn't do it herself. And so they were trimming trees, they were planting trees, they were planting flowers and what have you. They had cut lawns, and they'd just done such a beautiful job that the street now looks good. It won't just be the house that they build that looks good, but the lawns of all those who lived on that street. And this end of Walnut is a dead end. It's past Allen Chapel, going that way down Walnut, and they addressed every home on that street, those teams, in making them beautified by their yards. One lady, she was so happy, they pressure washed her home. They trimmed all the palms in the back of her yard. Her fence was built, one fence was bending because of palms. They took the palms up out of the ground. I mean, they did some extensive work, and I commend them for the work that they've done. So for me, having made that investment to help them build homes, to know that they were going to go beyond just the homes, I was so proud to have contributed to that effort. It kind of reminds me of what I'm trying to do with my roofs, that when we do the roofs in zone six, that we will also paint their homes and landscape their yards, so that they will have a total new look, not just a new roof, but a total makeover, all right? Now, Commissioner May, I saw when you walked through the seafood festival, and perhaps you were just there as quick as you were at Campbell Middle School, but honey, I don't know who you saw or didn't see, but if you look at the social media and hear what everybody's saying about the seafood festival, oh, they were there. They were there so late that I didn't shut it down until 12:30. Food trucks were having to go and get more food, they ran out of food, and my potato guy had to go to the store and get more potatoes. Social media is talking about this thing like it's been something that we've been doing all along, because we did it just that well. I'd like to thank Betty Goodman and staff, and leisure services, Keith Willis and his staff, Andy, and traffic, and everybody, the city manager for doing it, my commission colleagues for voting on it, because you know we did this in 2019, but in 2019, we did it so quick that it was done, and it was appreciated, but honey, in 2022, it was done, and it was done well, and they are talking about it. In fact, one of our vendors is on social media telling people, shaming people, because they weren't participating. And yes, Commissioner Henry, we've already thought about how can we expand it. It won't necessarily perhaps be on that street, but maybe down some of the little side streets, because now folks will want to come, because they'll know we're serious about the crab and seafood. I think we're going to change festival to fest, because that sounds kind of sporty, Crab and Seafood Fest.
So when I was there, I thought it was fantastic. I believe it was well-attended, and to be honest with you, I would have liked to see more people from, you know, from Beachside shop there, recognize some people who come to commission, but I would have liked to see more people come over there.
This is my turn to talk. It didn't call for response, but it was overflowing with folks from all walks of life, black, white, Chinese, children, people with their dogs were there. People were sitting down in the reserve section, we had so many people there. It was just a wonderful day, it was a beautiful day, and you know what really made me feel well, is to see the people from all walks of life, because I don't want anyone in our city to be afraid to go anywhere in our city, and I want you to know that Midtown welcomes you. And we ask all of the businesses to be open, because when it's not a crab or seafood fest, we want you to know that you can still come to Dr. Mary McLeod-Pethon Boulevard and support the businesses that are there. And I think that was one of the main things that we were able to do, to support those businesses as well, to know that they're open and ready for business. So ladies and gentlemen, get ready, because in 2023, oh, the Crab and Seafood Fest is coming.
Is that, you know, I hate to do this to you all, but that festival was so good in staff, because I want to see that street have that type of energy more than one time of year, more than Bike Week. And those are the things that I want us, we got a new redevelopment director. You weren't there, were you there, if he was there?
Yeah, they both were there.
You both were there?
Caitlin.
Caitlin? So it was, it was just that good. It's, it was everything that I want to see in Midtown, and I can't say any more than that, other than it was everything that I want to see, and I just want to see more, because I believe that it's good for that block, it was good for the students, it's good for old folks, young folks. My children were there, my wife was there, we were comfortable, I saw people making money, and so I can't say enough about it, except more, more, more. So you all, whether Commissioner Reed comes up with another idea, then do it twice, a barbecue fest, or whatever y'all call it, a cook-off, a cake-off, whatever it takes to drag us down there, because then we'll find more reasons to continue. I had that as definitely one of the things for me to talk about. Great job.
Mr. Mayor, let me just say one thing.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
One vendor shared with the manager that he made more money in that one day than he has made in an entire week during Bike Week.
During Bike Week, yeah.
In that one day, and he had to go to the store and get more food.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's big time, that's what we want, because we are trying, we don't want any area of Daytona Beach to be left behind. So while we talk about that, I just want to, and she was pushing you along, that Main Street project that we've been talking about, I hope, I don't know how it's coming, but I hope you guys are, before too long, be able to bring something to us. Okay, I just want to make sure I throw that out. The zone five, I was riding through zone five, and I was riding through on, maybe 10 days ago, and zone five is where I grew up, that's Commissioner Henry's zone. So as I was driving through, it just looked like my car drove a little smoother. Pulled up on some of those paved streets, and brother, I went down Third Street, and I have never, in 52 years of living, seen it look better. One of the proudest moments of my existence in this chair. I wrote, "It has never looked better." I was so proud. Job well done. Job well done. And, and the next night, I got to the basketball game at Holly Hill, they were playing Silver Sands, and a little young man who lives on Libby Court, his daddy came up to me and said, "Man, Mayor, you're doing one hell of a job." And I didn't know what he was talking about, and I thought about it, I said, "Oh, I know what he's talking about." He lives on the roads that I drove on last night. One of the proudest moments of my life. Good job, let's keep, let's keep going. I know, it's not the thing that makes the newspaper headlines, but it is what impacts the quality of life and the quality of living in this city. Everybody wants their road to be cared for. Everybody wants to know that their dreams are cared for, everybody, and when you see it happen, it says that the city cares about you. ERAU, manager and I had a meeting on yesterday with the president and board chairman and some others, and they will reach out to each of you with a very important proposal, and whether you are able to meet with them or not, in the coming weeks, I will meet with them, and then I will make a presentation about what they're going to be requesting of us, which I think is a light, but pertinent ask of a transformational project that they have coming. Folks, Mayor Richard was at the meeting, and you are, you know, he and I had a chance to talk. You are mayor at different times. He was mayor during the recession, and his work was no easier than my work. In a lot of ways, it was a lot more difficult for us during that time because of the challenges, but he talked about, you know, what a great time this is for us, and how, how important it is to continue to take advantage of these opportunities. And what's coming to Ember Riddle is in part an extension of what Mr. Brown's donation and other things, but I'll let them share that with you all, and then we'll come before you and ask you of what I think, hopefully you will see, as light asking for an institution that has an economic impact on our city, that it just grows and grows and grows and expands every year. You know, we're living in a great time, and this project, I think, you all are going to be excited. That's all I can say. And so with that being said, my final remark is, I want to say to the folks in Bridgeport Heights, I realize that for you, that neighborhood and this issue is your home, and I agree with you when I saw what happened. And this commission and staff, I think, I know that for you all, a part of it is that something was taken away from you, and I know many of you are probably watching on TV, but I hope that you can understand that we're doing and have done all that we can to return that to the way that it was. If it has a light tweak, it'll be a light tweak, but we have to respect that. And, but, but my final remark on that is, my hope is that we can heal. You know, as a mayor, I'm always a person, my mother always said that I was one of the six that was the peacemaker, but I believe in, in healing. Sister might say that I was the troublemaker in secret, and then in public, I was the peacemaker.
I did learn something about that.
But I, but I, that, that wouldn't be wholly accurate, but, but at any rate, I want us to heal and move forward to a greater day, and I said that at the last meeting, but I say it again, because I think this is an opportunity for you all to be a better and stronger community, and that concludes my remarks. Mr. Manager?
Real quick, just want to say that the staff working with Commissioner Reed and Ms. Presley did an exceptional job, and I thought that they would say they were tired, but they have other ideas really to activate that.
That's what I want to hear. With you.
That, so it will be, be good, and not only in that area, but throughout the city. There are a bunch of things that they have in their mindset for Beachside, for downtown, and also for Midtown. So did want to do that, thanks staff for what they do. Andy has submitted me, we've been having meetings and discussions with individuals on Beachside in reference to lighting in certain areas off of, you know, Halifax and some of the other streets. They've given me a lighting plan that we will be, he's asking me to just sign off on it without looking at it, but I'm looking at it, Andy. But many of the areas that we've had concerns with for lighting, he submitted a report to me today that I'm going to be evaluating, and I think that we have the resources to go ahead and implement it. We will be bringing something to you all, and reference to Main Street, if, as long as him and Fred can get on the same page, I think we'll be able to do something to improve the rest of the B Street, but also the Main Street improvements that you all have asked for. The Orange Avenue Meeting Committee, we've been meeting with some, individually with some of the members. We'll have a meeting coming up. Do you remember that the first meeting date?
I don't.
May 9th? Yeah, I think it is. So we will be, that committee will start moving, Paula Long will be leading that. I also wanted to share, I try to talk loud, we received some awards.
The Daytona Beach Visitors Bureau, Chief Area Convention and Visitors Bureau did a online voting for sites with all of the people that come to their website. They voted, did surveys of different items over the past year, they accumulated that stuff, so we received the 2022 Visitor Choice winner for best historical cyclist voted on the Daytona Beach Boardwalk in here. We won that from visitors that came here. The Daytona Beach Visitor Choice 2022, Area Convention and Visitors Bureau recognized the downtown Daytona Beach as the 2022's Visitor Choice winner for best downtown district.
Wow. Good deal.
Best performing arts venue was the Daytona Beach Bandshell.
Oh, Bandshell, beat people.
I thought it was my backyard, but they did go around it. Best live music location was the Daytona Beach Bandshell, and the Visitor Choice runner-up for the best downtown Daytona Beach Main Street. I thought we were going to be number one, but we were the runner-up. So these items, it was voted on, I wanted to see the surveys, but it was the Visitors Bureau, and I'm going to really try to figure out what was the, how the voting took place, but they sent out emails to anyone that came onto the sites and asked them to vote on things at the end of this year, and those were the awards we received. I want to know who got the best downtown or best Main Street, but those, just wanted to share those items with you. We'll hang those up, locations here, but thank you, staff, for what you do. You make my job a little bit easier, so I appreciate that.
All right, great job, great job. Mr. Attorney? No thoughts? Okay, at this time, we will hear from the residents of Daytona Beach.
Okay, our first speaker is Randy Gray, and on deck is Dan Stone.
I'm not here just to hear myself talk, I promise you. I'd rather be over there at Belly Buster Wednesday, watching the Tortugas. They're a great team. Anyway, I have a email that was sent out to everyone, and I know you've all had it, and maybe you've had a chance to read it, maybe not, but I would like to ask if the clerk could maybe read it? No?
I've read it.
You'll read it?
I have read it.
Oh, you have read it. I just wondered if the, if the clerk could read it so everyone could hear it, and kind of gives you a.
You can read it.
I don't have my glasses.
Oh.
I didn't bring them, so, yeah, there you go. I'll leave this in here, and maybe Jennifer can read it.
Okay.
Okay.
I actually want to say, you know, I appreciate the efforts that have been going forward, but we still feel like maybe, you know, this whole thing has been held for ransom by the new owners in such a way that, you know, now we want restrictions, or maybe some restrictions or, or not. I mean, and, I mean, if you were on this side, you know, I worked a lifetime to buy my home, a lifetime.
Yes, sir.
And, and that was part of the deal, and then to have it, I haven't, I haven't had a full night's sleep since this whole thing came about, until I talked to Commissioner Traeger. Thank you. I finally, it's like, wow, I slept all night. You know, I got an opportunity to speak with, with people that, you know, that maybe 30 years prior to me doing it, throwing that cast net down there and catching bait fish at 4:00 a.m. in the morning before I go out, you know, big fish eat little fish, so I go down there and catch my bait fish, throw them in a bucket, and then I'm off to the jetty or wherever it is, and, and, you know, Commissioner Reed talked about that seafood. You had me salivating, girl, I tell you what, I was like, because no one likes it, but I can promise you this, and I'm sure, I didn't have the opportunity, I'm sure it tasted fantastic, and no one loves it more than me, but when you catch it, it tastes even better. If you catch it and you cook it, it's just all about that, you know, that passion, that you did this from start to finish, so, you know, I don't want everyone want that taken away from me, or if I can pass it forward, you know, it was passed down to me by people, and I want to make sure it's there, that I can pass it down to the next generation and make a difference, because, you know, anyone that doesn't fish, it's like, once you do it one time and you're successful at it, you're hooked for the most part. So that's basically what, what I had to say, and, you know, appreciate, you know, the efforts going forward so far, okay? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dan Stone, and on deck is Malcolm Williams.
Thank you. Dan Stone, 2240 South Halifax. Mr. Mayor, we've never met, I don't think, but I know we've. Mr. Mayor, we've never met, I don't think, but I know we've had communications that we've read.
Yes, sir.
We share a basic philosophical tenet of life, and that is, it's never the wrong time to do the right thing. You demonstrated it tonight on the dirt thing, you demonstrated it back in either January or February where you said, we did, we did make a mistake when we gave that property away and we have to make it right. I'm asking you tonight to do the right thing again. Think carefully about your next decision. Make those decisions in the light of day. Debate the pros and cons of those decisions before you put them into effect. I submit that Mr. Jagger is not the right guy to give you this advice. He was wrong in 2020 when he said you followed the law when you abandoned the property. He was wrong when he reaffirmed that decision later in either 2020 or 2021. In January, he said, you made a mistake on his advice abandoning the land, and you should go to court to have that decision annulled. He didn't go to court to have that decision annulled, and we're sitting here today having him negotiating a deal in darkness, in the night of, at night, not in the public, for some future of this property, which rightly belongs to the citizens of Daytona Beach. Take it back, make it the citizens' property again, and then use your good graces and judgment to do with it what you will, but do it after you own it. Don't negotiate while somebody else, as he said earlier, it's a different deal now because they own it. Well, they don't have to, you made a mistake two years ago, just take it back. And and please read our letter, please read it carefully, we've put a lot of time in this. Sarah Metz has provided legal advice to Mr. Jagger and to you. We think the original decision was wrong, and we request that you repeal it. Take the property back, start from square one. Thank you.
Go ahead, thank you. Just don't understand why you all want to fight. I think you're missing something. Just let's get to that point. And then if on, when he, this will be public record, you will have time, we will debate it and discuss it as a commission, and if you don't want it in that way, we'll make a decision at night, but you'll be able to speak to it. And that's, that's, it's not going to be done, and he is our attorney, and he will bring us something that we have to make a decision on, and this time it will not be
You're done, sir.
One that's hastily decided upon.
Nope.
Yeah, your time's up, you can talk to me later though if you want.
Mr. Mayor, would it be possible to have that letter put in the record?
They already have it.
It is in the record.
Give us email to us, yeah.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Malcolm Williams, 1006 Libby Avenue. I just want to make a couple of comments. One thing about it, we are very happy and the residents are really loving the new roads, especially in Cedar Highlands, but it did come with some of concerns. We hope the next time that this project gets done that we have a bigger conversation because we would have liked to, the whole circle have been done, especially when we had been talking about beautification and all of the things that we wanted to see with the property, the whole circle is what we thought was going to get done. And it's, it's not kind of visually pleasing when you got the entrance not done, half of the road on one circle done, the other back half not done. It was just a little concerns and we all had some questions about that. Another thing that we questioned, if we could have had done, especially when we talk about the speeding and stuff in our area, is that that whole circle, especially where I live, would have been striped. There's no stripes separating the two lanes, so people literally just ride that circle however they please. And so we thought that that was going to be done, and that was not. It's just literally the little, and I think in the picture on the City Managers Newsletter, it shows that stripe is just at that beginning, and that's it. Another thing is, we didn't talk about the trucks that did the work were parked in front of Jim, on the grass areas of Jimmy Ann, those have now left a hole, a dirt patch in a sense. So I don't know how we want to attack that. One another concern is that we do have these beautiful streets, and you asked for a list of streets, Jimmy Ann, Third, Fifth, Imperial, Cadillac, and Essex are now NASCAR speed tracks. And that are some of the areas where the speeding has been, always been a problem, but now that they have these smooth rides, has definitely become a problem. And I know we're talking about the speed bumps and things of that nature, but we are pleading to the residents now to be more conscious aware, especially around the time that kids are getting out. Some of the residents have already spoke to me and they're going to figure out a way to go out and do our own slowdown signs in the meantime while we get other things in focus to kind of offset some of the police presence that we're asking for. We know that's going to take time. And Mr. Strickland, last thing, we've been talking about trees today. During the pandemic, we, the Forty and Under Group met with the mayor, and we came across a program that we were trying to spearhead called Community Canopy, where they would come in and assess a certain area and provide free trees for the area. So I'm hoping that's a project that you could steer, or if anybody would like to steer, I think it'd be a great addition to our community to provide free trees for our communities. Thank you.
I want to remind you all, or staff, whoever took the photos, please share the photos of those roads because I want to promote the photos in social media. So, because, again, outstanding. Next speaker?
Okay, our next speaker is Frederick Brown and on deck is John Nicholson.
Sorry, missed the on deck. Malcolm's a little taller.
Frederick Brown, 1501 Crescent Ridge, Daytona Beach. First of all, I'd like to tell Commissioner May, I was there representing Zone One with my family, and we had a good time except for one thing, the food ran out in a lot of places and the lines were long. So, yeah, unfortunately, we didn't get to partake in some of the food there, but the festival was great. Be nice if we clean up the eastern part and as we talked about extending it to allow for more vendors. Two of the vendors, I understand, were completely wiped out because we had the Jeep event, which also attended it as well, so. Yeah, I enjoy, you know, attending these, I've been to the Daisy Stocking Park as well, which I'd be super excited to go if it had renewable energy, solar panels there to power it, that would be great. My first thing, and I really wanted to talk about, of course, the public land, as you know, we've talked about this for the past two years, and I have to agree with Mr. Stone on this. Now, I am a citizen of Daytona Beach, I am not a citizen of Bridgeport Heights, but if you read the way it was deeded, it was deeded to the citizens forever. It didn't say just the citizens, it didn't say select people, it said the citizens forever, okay? And that's pretty clear. And that's how it was deeded. Okay, now, the entire thing, and I'm glad it's going to be in the record, hopefully be in with the minutes as well, and for the public who hasn't had a chance to read this, I think Sarah laid it out pretty well, but a lot of the details, of course, on that, she was, you know, it's a brief. So, you know, the details as far as what transpired, especially in the discussion about our city attorney and how things were handled, it was in January that you all voted seven to zero to take the legal action. Now, under the laws of the city code, the attorney reports to the city commission, that's his boss, and then you report to us, the citizens. So that's how it's supposed to be handled. You gave them an instruction, it didn't happen. Now, four months down the road, now we're doing this negotiation, and I understand, Mayor Henry, you want to be the smoother on this, but the point is, that land was public land. It was a mistake, the application was wrong, we've been through this a thousand times, and yet it was allowed to slide through because a particular law firm did help push it through with a faulty application. And of course, as you recall, this was done in a six-second bang of the gavel when there was no meeting due to COVID. So the citizens weren't allowed to be present for this. Okay, and now we're saying, we're going to, we're going to give you the details of this supposed negotiation, which was not your instructions, at the last second, so we can all hash it out in here. And I hope if we're not happy, because I already hear some words discussed, pedestrian traffic only, for example, canoes, kayaks, which used to go down, in fact, the city maintained a sign there.
Our next speaker is John Nicholson and on deck is Marjorie Johnson.
I'm just curious, aren't we working on this?
I don't understand, are we working on it?
Right, you're working on this.
Yes, the agreement is, hasn't been signed yet, but the agreement's finalized, we finished the survey work, we just need to...
Right, there's a process to work on that, right.
We'll be available to the public as part of the agenda, and honestly, the intent was to restore the status quo, the existing condition.
I don't know how else you can state that anymore fervently or succinctly, succinctly than status quo, but we will see, and if you all are not happy with it, then you will have an opportunity to lobby, to continue to fight a battle that you could lose. But I know that you are, you have great legal advisors who I respect greatly, but we're not going to likely want to go into an exorbitant fight over something because we're mixing small words or small details or some small issue, but it's a decision that we will make because we're trying to rectify a mistake. But what I will not do is just continue in a battle. That I will not support, so.
And I promise you, if the agreement is not to your liking, we will be filing suit the day after you make that determination.
Well, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Jagger.
Mr. Nicholson?
John Nicholson, Daytona Beach Side. Couple of things, one, in the hometown news, there was an article on what Hum is planning on doing, they bought a food truck, they're closing down Hum, they're going to turn it into apartments. The gentleman was at the Affordable Housing Board to explain it. Fifteen years ago, we had a problem with feeding all over town, across from St. Paul's, City Island, et cetera, so we decided to have it at one location where Hum has it now. So they're going to now close that and then put the truck all over town again. So the problem we had in the past is coming back to haunt us. Hum, Halifax Urban Industries, sorry about that. So I'm asking you in advance to look at this before it happens, because we don't want to go down that path again. We really don't want the homeless people congregating four and five hours in advance, taking things out of the neighborhood, doing their business in the bushes and what we went through before, we really don't want to do that again. So I'm asking you to do this ahead of time rather than after it already happens. Secondly, regarding the redistricting, we talked about it last meeting, Stacy Cantu chimed in that Orange City had not redistrict. I called them, yes, they did, months ago. Secondly, I talked to Lisa Lewis, the reason the others have not redistricting is because they don't have to. They don't have districts. If you don't have districts, you don't have to redistrict. But every district that has to do it has already done it, except for the city of Daytona Beach. Now, if Mr. Jagger will admit it, there are parameters as to how many people can be in each district. When they go past a certain parameter, they must redistrict. There's a district that we have that has been out of a legal status for 11 years. You just extended that to 12 years. 12 years is too long to be over by 10% or 50% or 70%, she's almost 100% over. We should have done this 10 years ago. When they hit 1,000 over, 2,000 over, 3,000 over, 4,000 over, 5,000 over, 6,000, 7,000, and by the time we do this, it'll be 8,000 people over. It's way too long. Traffic studies. Three, 20 years ago, we were promised a traffic study on the beachside. Glenn Ritchie promised us a study on the beachside 15 years ago. We were promised another study, we've never seen it, they were done, they were paid for, we've never seen, and every Memorial Day, we have a problem on the beachside with traffic. I'm asking that those be made public and we solve the problem once and for all. And lastly, you promised me a project manager for beachside. We need a project manager and we need DDA type business to promote Main Street. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Marjorie Johnson and on deck is Asti Tucker.
Marjorie Johnson, 122 South Beach Street. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank our city manager, city manager of the Four Rewards, he received, you're doing an outstanding job as our city manager, you have hit the ground running, and we have streets being paved in our neighborhood that was never ever paved before, and we have accessibility to you, which is very important, that we don't have to our mayor on the street. And I'd like to thank you, Mr. Strickland, because you are my new city manager, and if I have a question, I can call you anytime of day and night and get it answered. Thank you for your job, well done. Also, I would like to say that I too would like for you to learn from your mistake and not give away our public property. I spoke at this podium several times regarding that, and you sit here and voted seven to zero to do that. So you're sick and tired of people talking about it, but we were sick and tired of you doing it, and you did it in a way that was not fair. So in the future, learn from your mistakes, do not give away our public property. We need that property and we need to have access to it at all times. I also would like to say regarding the Orange Avenue Recreation Building, we want that building restored. It is so sad that some of you, some of you wasn't here, Miss Cantu, and a few others wasn't here, Mr. Ken Strickland, but that building sat there for years, and we had access to it for our public meetings with to save our neighborhoods. And my aunt got a big retirement party, Miss Prince Oliver and her husband and that building. So I would like to have that building restored, I'd like for you to get it back so we can use it. I did have a meeting with my county councilperson, Billy Wheeler, and she told me about the grants that you all have access to. We would like for you to get those grants and fix that building up. The city should have never let that building go down. I like what Miss Jagger said about that and the usage of that building. You're here to do the people's work, so we need to get that building restored so we can have access to it. Also, I said, there's another problem in Zone Six, that lot nearby Tim McRae is overgrown again. I have to come to every meeting, and it's in my neighborhood, I'm in, I'm at the beginning of Key Street, and I did meet with them about paving that street.
Okay, our next speaker is Asti Tucker and on deck is Patricia Hurd.
Asti Tucker, 715 Haneyman Street. I came up here today to ask you guys for your blessing and to sponsor my youth nonprofit organization. Last week, I had the opportunity to speak with Coach Harry, shall I say. And basically, what I do is, I want to restore the youth in my own way, to give back to what was given to me when we had the Powell Center and mentors and people that gave us an outing to be able to travel, to see colleges, to understand these things. What I do at my organization is, I pour into them, I have a poverty-stricken type youth that society kind of gave up on them, but I'm not going to give up on them, so I let it, I let sports be the outlet, but more so to teach them that it's more to life than the game of sports, that you can travel, you could be whatever you want to be. What I do is, I take them to colleges, I take them to trade schools, and I take them to meet different people or different areas as we travel. We don't have the, my organization, we're a 501(c)(3) Texas, we don't have the funding to do everything that I want to do. Last year, I came out of pocket almost $12,000 because it may not mean a lot to anyone else, but it means everything to me to give back to them. So again, with your, with your hand and your blessings, I would appreciate you guys'
Do you have any other documentation about what you've done? I watched you last week when I saw you coaching, and then I listened to what you planned and what you've done.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any other documentation or... Do you have any other documentation or correspondence that we can have?
I have brochures here. I have other pamphlets in the back. I've done community cleanup a couple of weeks ago. I actually met one of the, I think, future running commissioners, Mr. Miller, Steve. He actually took a picture and posted it on his social media. So, my vow is to do that, like, once a month, different areas of Daytona, because the kids need community service hours, or more so, they need to understand what Daytona Beach is, really. Not just, "I'm in the city of Daytona." You want to give back to something.
Okay. I saw what you were doing, and I know what you do.
Yes, sir.
And I intend to support it, but I think I need more of a plan-
Yes, sir.
-what you want to do for this year.
Yes, sir. I have paperwork in the back.
Okay. You give me that, and I can tell you, I'll make a donation of $500.
Yes, sir.
For my Bike Week fund.
Yes, sir.
Sir, in order to meet our guidelines, you would need to establish a 501(c)(3) organization or-
I have that, sir.
-work through another.
I have that, sir.
Just provide that with the information-
I have that also.
Very good.
So, you're gonna write that to me?
Yes, ma'am.
I have spoken to him numerous times, and told him that once he got his 501(c)(3) set up, that I was good for $500 in Bike Week funds. So, if that's possible, I'd go ahead and commit $500 to it, of my Bike Week funds.
Okay.
I've seen the wonderful things that you're doing with the young men in the community.
Yes, ma'am.
Very proud. Thank you for what you're doing with those young men, taking them to see various things, taking them traveling, taking them to play in different tournaments and get different experiences. And I know, as a young person, that's hard, and coming out of your own pocket, that's hard.
Yes, ma'am.
So... And I know your program is growing. You're getting more and more young men every single day.
Yes, ma'am.
You started with, what, one team, and now you have two?
Three.
Three teams.
I incorporated a middle school girls' team now.
Also, you're doing girls as well. I didn't know you were doing girls as well. So, definitely continue up the great work that you're doing, and I'm going to offer up $500 from my Bike Week sponsorship.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Can I specify that my money went to the girls?
I don't mind.
I'd like to give $500 towards the girls.
Yes, ma'am. I would make note of that. And I truly thank you all for your time.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. You all may not know this, but, and I... Steve, you remember Tucker? You remember the crop program, maybe? Well, I ran a program at Daytona State for eight years, very much like that, but I had the benefit of money. It was through Daytona State, and each student actually got a scholarship to Daytona State when they graduated. Best job I ever had is, I was able to do so many things. I enjoyed it more than anything. You and I are gonna talk further, because I have some interest in deeper mentoring. And a part of my ARCA funds is gonna be clinics that I want to run, like, mayoral basketball clinics. And I'm gonna actually execute clinics for young men and girls to come in, where we will coach them. And I want to go into a deeper level of mentoring. So, we will talk about how we can do that, because I think it's programs like that that we have to support, and I want to do more. Okay? Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. Patricia Hurd, 822 Vernon Street, Daytona Beach, Florida. You know, Mayor, I can stay around that man all day long. Yes, sir? Yes, ma'am? I haven't heard that in so long. I respect him.
Yeah, me, too.
Yes, sir.
He's a good guy.
I come to tell you that I traveled down the worst Dr. Mayor McLeod-Bethune Boulevard that I have ever seen. And I do go around the states and the world. We're gonna have to do something about that. It is the worst. Speeding, passing on double lines, trashy, everything. It's ridiculous. Dr. Kane is not part of Dr. Martin Luther Kane Boulevard. I'm also concerned about the 18-wheelers parked in the neighborhood. There's a house across from me. They say $210,000, Ms. Reed. I don't know how they came up with that, but I have it in mail, a card. But how are you gonna sell a home with all of this in the neighborhood? Now, this is what I really come to tell you. I want Commissioner Reed to take more rise down Dr. Martin Luther Kane Boulevard, especially observing Park Drive and Dr. Mayor McLeod, Dr. King. I also would like for you to look at Cedar Street. Now, on Park Drive, you won't believe this. Go by there tonight. You'll see it. Dining room table, chairs. That's right. And further in the back is a sofa back there that you can rest on tonight or whenever. Trash is being thrown across the fence into the church park, churchyard. I just would like to see Dr. Martin Luther Kane Boulevard in Newtown, which is now part of Midtown, but we were Newtown back then. Something to be done about it. Thank you. You all have a good night.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, is it Jared Hoffener? I couldn't read what the...
Hoff Power.
Hoff Power, okay. And on deck is Ann Ruby.
Commissioner May mentioned briefly an outdoor gym at Lennox Park. I realize it's probably not, like, the space to maybe do that there, but my kids and I went to Sunrise Park in Holly Hill, and they just completed one, and it is really, really cool. I think if anybody has a park that has a local... Lennox Park is right near my house. I selfishly suggested that, but I suppose we could walk to another park that's sort of in the spirit of it. But it's a really cool idea. There's one in our neighboring city here to take a look at, and I think would be a really great asset to any part of this community. It's worth going to take a look at. There's a couple of buildings. 105 Orange, that's the Tartuga's admin headquarters. It is... It's full of grime. It's got broken windows at the street level, right on Orange Avenue, and it's been that way for over a month. That's not good, especially coming into rain season and hurricane season. That's gonna continue to make that historical and absolutely stunning building continue to degrade. But that's the sort of thing that I think we need to keep up on, some of these older buildings, and that's just broken windows. That's silly. So... Same thing 301 South Beach. That is the fire station. They have not painted in a year since I've been here. Their window sills, there's peeling, chipping paint. I think that adds to water intrusion. If they're not painting it, they're certainly not going around and sealing any of the windows, any of the things that they need to do for the general maintenance of that building, especially that beautiful historic building. I know they're looking at something else, but don't give up on that building either. Just as a final note, the Seafood Fest was amazing. Thank you for, Commissioner Reed, for your impassioned recommendation to go to that. I did. It was great. I stood in line for two hours, and it was worth it. It was great. I met amazing people in that line, and I got great food at the end of it. So, it was fabulous. Yeah, I can't wait for next year.
Thank you. Thank you for saying that.
Our next speaker is Ann Ruby, and on deck is Jennifer Kozowski.
Ann Ruby, 137 Park Avenue. I am curious as to where we are with our Nexus Study for the Inclusionary Zoning that was supposed to be back in some form or another. I'm hoping somebody in a back office somewhere has something, and that it's moving forward. Yes?
We sent it back.
What? You sent it...
We sent it back to the consultant, because it was not what we asked for.
Oh, great. Okay, cool. All right, I'll ask again later. I want to say, Tuesday afternoon, I spent at the Historical Society, and there is some new leadership there, and the energy there is tremendous.
What did you say? I'm sorry.
Oh, the Halifax Historical Museum on South Beach Street has some new leadership. The energy is tremendous. And they were able to pull from me a lot of information about the WACs who served here, playbills from performances they put on with the WAC Orchestra. They pulled a graduation photo, complete with the roster and the hometowns of people, a big graduating photo. Newsletters from the class number 16, which I think might have been a typing class later in the war. They did a very satirical little series of news articles that were kind of fun. And then, they also had a transcription of the handwritten letter by the woman who was involved with Mary McLeod-Bethune, or at least claimed to be, to getting her in touch with the Roosevelts. It was really kind of a neat narrative. And I'm really happy we have a new director, those two new directors, because also what they found was the 1946 summary of the Master Plan. And there's some really great ideas in here. And I know, I'm sorry. And they're very... We tend to be very verbose and kind of fuzzy in our language. They're pretty direct. They say, "If we... These things must be accomplished very soon, or we'll slide smugly back into mediocrity." They're very definite about their plans. The other... One of the other things they say is, how we... There's... We are all aware that our city, like most American cities, is faced with very acute problems. These problems will not solve themselves. How we go about solving them, and meeting the challenge of growth and change will determine whether we are to become the great American city our setting and our climate suggests, or a slovenly, second-rate tourist center. So, they really use their language well. And I made copies. I made a copy, and here's... They had multiple, multiple copies, so... And this is only a summary of the 1946 plan. I'm hoping you have the entire plan, because I would love to see the entire plan.
I think so.
Yeah, I know. The other thing that was interesting was, they gave a map. It's part of the exhibit, and it shows a bridge going across the river, ending up at Park Avenue. And it looks like it would have to then come out of a street I can't remember the name of, but it would... So, it would have come right... Thank you.
Okay. Our next speaker is Jennifer Kozowski, and on deck is John Birch. I don't see... Okay. Okay. Our next speaker is John Birch. There he comes.
Here he comes. How y'all doing? Long time no see. Just got a couple of issues. First of all, I'm glad to be back. It's my service dog that keeps me calm, Dr. Henry, Dr. Henry. Okay? I'm very calm now. I didn't know that animals would calm you down. Okay? God knows, it does. Now, history. History. Statues that we tear down. Racism still exists. Why would we erase history? My daddy was a slave, born in 1919. He, Baxley, Georgia, total redneck. But guess what he always said? "I had a good slave boss." He loved him. He stayed there to pay the family what? Bill. A lot of you all of color has forgotten history. And where I'm going at with that? I was here in Daytona. A lot of you all was not. Campbell. National Guards was there. We had the integration in the '70s. We didn't go to the beach. My mom had a beach house on Bethune Beach. That's why I could swim, and that's why I talk a lot of north, because she taught me to stand up for what I believe in. Some of you all are not standing up. And where I'm going at it is in my neighborhood, Zone 6. That's all we had with those little raggedy houses, that we used to put a pan here, a pan here, a pan here, just to rain. But guess what? It didn't rain every day. The sun came out. But what happened? I seen my daddy. No matter what you all say, Bill, we stayed in one-bedroom house, 12 kids. So, when I come to you all, I don't come half-stepping. I just come to talk about history. Don't you all forget, especially people of color, where you come from, because you have moved... See that love? Because you moved out the neighborhood and left your loved ones there selling dope. I clean up all the way down MLK. I don't bother nobody, but I see what's going on. But guess what? They are our kids that selling the dope. And most of you all do not go there for nothing but one reason, to go to church. Drive in, drive out, keep the windows up, close your... Look straight ahead. Now, I had an incident with my dog I had, too. I went to the police department. My kin people stole my other dog. I go and make a police report. I call them out. My kin people had a gun. Now, I'm waiting on the police to come. Know what the police did? Nothing. Went in there and listened to them lies. A lie. I want my dog back. Okay? That's no-
Thank you, John.
I just want the police department to know, I want my dog back, and I'll beat them. And you can do what you gotta do with them. I deal with them. Thank you very much.
Our final speaker tonight is Stephen Miller.
Steve Miller, 323 Walnut Street, beautiful Daytona Beach, Florida. Good American and the ladies of the city of Daytona Beach. I think y'all are the most diverse group I've ever seen in my life. I just want to invite you guys to our next neighborhood watch meeting, which will be Monday. And our guest speaker will be Larry Burnett, our property appraiser. So, you're gonna have some interesting information. I attended the fish fry. It was absolutely fantastic.
Who was fish fried?
No, I'm saying fish... Yo fish, yo seafood, seafood and crab fest, okay? I'm sorry for not using the proper name, but it was a lot of people there. You know, some people see the glass half-empt, and some people see it half-full. I saw it half-full. Thank you very much for your work and what you're accomplishing. Mr. Mayor, we have something in common. I love Zone 5, too. I remember being the commissioner of Zone 5. But you're right. I have never seen Third Street look so good, sir. In fact, and my last statement here was, talk about the mayor. I was in a conversation with some of the neighborhood folks. Mr. Mayor, they have a whole different appreciation for you right now. In fact, I even told them, "I think you're doing a fantastic job." So, thank you for the work you're doing. Okay?
That was my final speaker.
Good night, Daytona Beach. Let's breathe. All right.